Attendance. Approval of the agenda. Please bring your budget binders. Yes, I've done that. That's in red. Moved by Councillor Balma, second by Councillor Pearce. Let the agenda be approved for our use. All in favor? Well, I should have asked. Anybody have an addition? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie. Thank you. Declaration of pecuniary interest by anyone? Not at this time. Committee of the Hall. We need a motion to constitute the councils. Committee of the Hall. Councillor Coleman moves. Councillor Balma seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie. With, of course, our guests and attendants.
Correct.
Thank you. And you'll have them listed as we go along. Carrie. Presentation from external agencies. The word "external" bothers me, but that's the description. And the first is the Brant County Health Unit. Yes. How did you know you were first? You weren't reading me. You were reading the agenda. Welcome, and please proceed when you're ready.
Okay. Can you hear me okay? I'm not sure the... I'm usually loud enough. Okay. So I'm Joanne Tober. I'm the executive director from the Brant County Health Unit. And Dr. Malcolm Locke, our medical officer of health, is here with me this evening. So if I just get the arrows going in the right direction. So just to give you a little bit of an overview of some of our accomplishments for 2017, we do have an accountability agreement with the ministry and a whole slew of indicators. And we do manage to meet the vast majority of those indicators. And we have been working a lot more closely with the local health integration network. And we're providing them with more population health information to help them make decisions about where health services should be situated. Going into 2018, we are going to be doing a lot more work on the opioid issue. I'm sure that's been something that's been in the papers a lot. And we're also looking at, we have new programs that are coming into effect next year. So we're still waiting for information from the ministry on that. But there is going to be some changes to our programming and some changes to our organizational standards as well. We have a new accountability framework coming. So our budget for 2018 is going to be $914,285. And that is an increase of $13,511, which is a 1.5% increase. And that's entirely attributable to salaries based on our contract negotiations. So budget pressures are the new standards being implemented. So there are going to be different expectations in different programs and services. And in the accountability framework, we're also expecting there to be increased organizational expectations. Our budget is the same as it was in 2014. So we have been frozen from that time when the ministry introduced a new funding formula. So, and we don't expect any increases again in 2018. We, as far as capital, the Ministry of Health has implemented a capital process. And previous to this year, we were not able to apply for capital. We either had to look at our operating budgets or put in one-time requests. And if the ministry had extra dollars, sometimes those were funded. But now we do have a new process, so we can put things forward, which is positive for us, although the process is new, so we don't have a whole lot of details yet. And we do always have the issue that I think a lot of people struggle with. We do have an aging infrastructure, and we will be requiring updates to our building. And one in particular is we're looking for an upgrade for our elevator in 2018, and we will be applying to the ministry for funding for that. I will stop there. Any questions?
Any question? Any question?
Yes.
Members of council, questions? Councillor Balma.
If I may through you, your worship, just so council has an idea of some of the pressures that you guys are under, Joanne. Has the 2017 budget for the Brant County Health Unit been approved yet by the ministry?
It just was.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, we just recently received that.
It was approved.
Yes. In mid-November.
Councillor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Threw to join. The funding for the Brant County Health Unit, is it 75 provincial, 25 municipal? Or is it vice versa?
It's, we receive both coshered funding, which is under that type of a formula, and 100% funding. So when you put it all together, it doesn't come out to be a 25-75 split. So that is what the ministry has said in the past, but that isn't in fact how it is carried forward. That came into effect about 2006. But since that time, the ministry has given us a number of programs that are 100% funded. So now the share is not the 25-75.
And that was my next question. I just heard this, and obviously I don't know for sure. But as new programs come out, do you find, yeah, are they mostly provincial funding? Or do you find that the province tries to slide it in there and get the municipality to pick up the tab?
A little bit of both, but most recently it's been 100% funded. So when we look at the Healthy Smiles Ontario program, for example, we got about $380,000. That's 100% funded from the ministry for dental programming for youth and children. So the vast majority recently for tobacco programming and for dental programming, et cetera, has been, and opioid harm reduction funding has been all 100% provincial.
Okay. Just keep an eye on them. And just a comment. I've had occasion to ask for help from a couple of your staff for some word issues over the years, and they've been extremely helpful, so.
Thank you. Very nice to hear. Thank you.
Councillor Powell.
Is the thought or implication of expanding the health units into bigger regions, which came from somebody, somewhere in the government, is that still on, or has that died out?
Well, at this point, there was a report that came out called the Expert Panel Report, and they did recommend that the health units amalgamate into these regional structures with still the maintenance of a local health entity. And at this point, that's just a report, so that wasn't a decision to move forward. And overwhelmingly, as I think that this council and others amow, every public health unit has expressed their concern and their lack of support for that model. So it was a universally negative response to that report. But we await the ministry movement on that or not. But at this point, we have no direction to move in that. Move that forward.
Anyone else? If not, Councillor Gatworth.
Thank you. Councillor Powell just asked my question. But I'm glad to hear you say that, at this point, it's a report. Because when I read that, I was really concerned. Bigger is not always better. And we lose our local control. And I think that you're doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. There were enormous concerns with that report.
No further questions? And we do recognize Dr. Locke, our medical officer of health. Did you wish to comment in any way? Are you in favor of this budget or not?
Yes, of course.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you very much.
Very much. That completes the board's help. John Noble Home. And we have representatives from John Noble Home coming forward. Councillor Miller is skipping out without hearing, but maybe we'll hear it later. Welcome, and please proceed when you're ready. This is your first session with Brant County Council, isn't it?
That's the second one.
You'll find it's quite good.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Jennifer Miller. I'm the administrator of the John Noble Home. So I'm just, thank you for the opportunity to present our budget to you. So some of our department highlights for 2017. We were accredited with commendation. We're quite proud of that. We received our compliance review with the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care, and we received no orders. We were also chosen this year for the best long-term care service for the Brant News Readers' Choice Award. And this is the second year straight we've been chosen for that. This year, we also established a new modern logo. And we established a creation of a social media page and a staff engagement program. And we operated within budget year-to-date. Our priorities for 2018 include the revitalization of our vacant Belkor area, the designation of Davis Court as a dementia unit, which we feel will attract some additional funding, and will further our Noble project. And we'd like to obtain status as a Registered Nurses Association, the RNAO Best Practice Spotlight Organization. Our proposed budget follows the current 2017 staffing complement and includes all wage, salary, and benefit costs, and does provide contingencies for unsettled contracts as well as pay equity costs. It follows the city guidelines, which set inflationary pressures at 1.5%. And at other rates were used for utility costs, whatnot. And so this gives us a net long-term care budget with an increase of 1.77%. Our raw food and programs and services were adjusted to increase according to additional funding which we received from the province, which we are very happy to see additional food in our food program, additional funds, sorry. And our revenue is projected based on our current CMI, which drives our provincial funding, and that is the case mix index, and it's based upon acuity of residents. Increases in preferred accommodation are also expected following the Ministry of Health's rise in client rates. As well, our estimates per diem funding increases are based on our current and previous year's history, with a 2% in nursing and personal care, 1.1% in raw food, and 1% in all other areas. As well, this is all based on a 90% occupancy target, which we are always at 99%. Our budget pressures, our funding from the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care is dependent on our case mix index. So the residents that come through are, depending on their acuity, is how we are funded through the Ministry of Health. And then outcome of our unsettled contracts. Right now, we have three that are up. ONA, which is our Registered Nurses Association. They expire April 1st of 2018. Our IUWE expires December 31st. We've just negotiated with those as well. And then SEIU, which is our Service Employees International Union, and they are the majority of our workers, and they're currently in arbitration. Their contract expired 2016. So those are some budget pressures for us. As well as the effects of Bill 148. Currently, we see those effects being translated through things like union negotiations and whatnot, as far as it won't affect the wages currently, but we do feel that it will, there will be some pressures with that when we hit negotiations. For budget reductions, we're not proposing any reductions, as this would directly impact our service to our residents. Our proposed capital, we do a 10-year capital review, asset review. It's ongoing, and we look at the state of our building. For 2018, we are looking at a total of 745,000, which the county's share would be 203,000. That would include HVAC replacement, lighting upgrades, nursing equipment, and such, so. And that's it.
That completes your presentation?
It does.
Was the chairman of your board able to attend this evening?
Yes.
Councillor Simons, it's noted, is present. Councillor Balma.
If I may through you, your worship, I was quite pleased to see the adjustment to what we had at council last night from the John Noble Home regarding the increase in potential beds through the provincial government. So hats off, if I may just make a comment on staff. I'm quickly seeing the opportunity there and adjusting our plans for the vacant space of the John Noble Home as quickly as possible. So, thank you.
Councillor Gatworth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Jennifer. I note a lighting upgrade. That should save us some dollars at home.
Through the chair, yes, we expect to see some energy savings with that. As well, it will increase the lighting, and it's going to affect the efficiency of the building, for sure.
Are we getting any free incentives or offers from, would it be Bradford Power that is your service provider?
So we did receive in the past, sorry, through the chair, we did receive in the past some grants in regards to that, and I'll address that to Shelley.
This will also allow us to maintain a lighting standard, which we're obligated to do through the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care. So it is a phasing of a project. But yes, we did receive some substantial rebates in the past on our lighting, and it is dependent on the levels that we're adjusting to. But we are going to the latest and greatest LEDs, and just recently completed a project, which we've noticed a huge improvement in the levels in our building.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Pearce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, if I could, just a quick comment. Congratulations. You've had, you know, a compliance review here with no orders. So that's something we're very proud of. So very good on you for that. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Councillor Powell.
See, Mr. Mayor, to Jennifer, Jennifer, on the budget pressure section, and looking at the contracts up for renewal, plus the Bill 148, if some of those contracts were to be settled, is there money in the budget to handle those? Or would you have to defer them till another calendar year?
Through the chair, so we do have two that have currently been settled within our budgeted allowance. The other, the SEIU contract, which is up for arbitration, is going to be happening in February. So we, we're not sure at this time if there will be any effects of Bill 148. It's just a cautionary that we're taking. But we have budgeted some contingencies for that.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Best to you in your new office.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. He probably is in the kitchen area. Yes, that's what I think. Anyway, Councillor Miller will be returning legally in a few minutes. Good evening. We now will switch to conservation authorities. First is Grand River Conservation Authority. And we notice that Joe Farwell is here in good time, of course, for the presentation. And next is, and with him is Keith Mertz, Secretary Treasurer and Assistant CAO, and Lisa Stotakel, Manager of Communications. Please come forward. Any or all? And please proceed when you're ready.
Well, thank you, Mary. And I'd like to introduce Lisa Stotakel, who's our manager of communications, and this is her first presentation to Brant County. So Lisa's going to handle the presentation. Keith's here for financial information. And if there's any other information, I'll be happy to answer any technical questions.
We welcome you to your first adventure in Brant County.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Budget-wise.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to take this opportunity as well to acknowledge your representatives on our board, Brian Coleman and Shirley Simons. And thank you for the opportunity to present the GRCA's proposed budget for 2018. So I'm going to be starting off the presentation as Joe mentioned, and it's a brief overview of the GRCA's strategic priorities, our budget drivers, highlights, and accomplishments. And then I'll turn things over to Keith. He'll talk a little bit about the budget. So a quick overview about the Grand River watershed. It is the largest watershed in southern Ontario. And to put that into perspective, it's about the size of Prince Edward Island. Our major tributaries are Conestoga, Speed, Theramosa, and Meth Rivers. And we have a population in the watershed of about 1 million people. It's a very rich agricultural region, and we have more than 50 drinking water systems that serve about 80% of residents in the municipalities, as well as the Six Nations Territory, and 30 municipal and First Nations wastewater treatment plants serving about 85% of residents.
Before you leave that page, I'd like to add two other important Brant waterways, namely Whitemans Creek and Fairchild.
Absolutely. And there's a little bit of information in here about a study that's happening at Whitemans Creek.
You go, Walter.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the GRCA's strategic plan provides direction on critical watershed issues. And our top three objectives are to protect life and minimize property damage, improve watershed health, and of course, connect people to the environment. There are certainly some challenges that we're facing in the Grand River watershed. Climate change is one that seems to be becoming a bigger and bigger issue. And certainly, I think a lot of people would say it's one of the main issues of our time. And so what we're seeing are more extreme events. So things like severe weather, droughts, and floods. Population growth, as well as a challenge that we face throughout the watershed. We are expected to reach about 1.5 million people by 2051. And that will increase demands on water and natural resources. And finally, extensive agriculture. So about 70% of the land in the watershed is considered agricultural. And what this means is things like fertilizers and farm chemicals need to be handled properly, properly stored, in order to minimize the impact on our waterways. And erosion, of course, needs to be addressed to protect farmland and water quality. Some of the highlights and accomplishments. The GRCA manages seven reservoirs to reduce flood damages, as well as to maintain flows in the river. You might be interested to know, with respect to the flood event that occurred in June of 2017, our reservoir operations during that event reduced flows in the Grand River through Parris and Glen Morris by about 23%. So that really helped to reduce the impact of flooding in those communities. Another purpose for those reservoirs is the management of flows. So water's released during the drier months to help maintain minimum flows and ensure the drinking water and wastewater treatment plants can operate properly. Some additional highlights and accomplishments include the fact that the GRCA provides advice and works with the county on the management of water control structures. The GRCA doesn't actually own any dams or dikes in Brant County, but we do have that partnership in place. And then we have equipment, including flood forecasting equipment, weather stations, as well as water monitoring stations throughout the county. There is a memorandum of agreement in place with the county. So the GRCA provides technical advice to the county on planning applications. This just helps the county access technical expertise on these planning matters. The Grand River Source Protection Plan took effect in July of 2016. And that, the development of that plan was funded 100% by the province. Currently, there is a new municipal supply well being drilled to meet capacity needs in St. George. And as I mentioned early, the Whitemans Creek Tier 3 Water Budget Project is underway. One program that we're particularly proud of, and I think is a great example of the way that the GRCA partners with municipalities, communities, and landowners, is the Rural Water Quality Program. So this slide shows the success of the program since its inception overall throughout the watershed. And this next slide is more specific to Brant and shows the success of the program since 2002. So 589 projects were completed, and those projects represent a total investment of about $3.1 million. The landowner contribution of that program was $1.9 million. These are some of the projects that were completed as a result of the program. So water course was fenced to restrict livestock access to waterways. We've planted riparian buffers and cover crops, as some examples. The GRCA is a major landholder in the watershed. We own about 48,000 acres of recreational and natural land. This includes 11 parks, of those Brant and Pinehurst Lake, Luther Marsh Wildlife Management Area, as well as six nature centers. That includes App Mill. And current initiatives of the GRCA include a wind down of the residential tenancy program. We're also evaluating other program areas. And hazard tree management has certainly been a focus, including dealing with emerald ash borer and the effects. Our parks and conservation areas are self-funded and oftentimes very weather-dependent. Our revenue forecasts for that reason are often prone to some fluctuations. That said, we have experienced three really great years in terms of revenue. We are certainly noticing increasing pressure with respect to management and cost due to population growth and as well just changing demographics, so the kinds of visitors that are coming to our parks. And with respect to outdoor education and other major initiative and program for us, this slide talks about the program overall, but I do have some information here with respect to Brant County. So approximately 385 day-long programs are offered, were offered in 2017 through the district school boards in partnership with them. And those were offered at App Mill. And that represents about 8,000 students who benefited from programs and classes in 2017. And about 2,000 days of camp for 400-day campers. The App Mill Nature Center also provides outdoor programming for a variety of organizations and community groups. So that concludes the highlights and accomplishments portion of our presentation. I'm going to turn things over to Keith now, who'll walk through the budget portion.
Thank you. So I have a couple of budget slides, and we'll just go through some highlights. But we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have about our budget as well. This calendar looks familiar to most of you. We go through about the same cycle every year, and our goal is to have the budget wrapped up and present the final draft to the February Annual General Meeting at the end of February, the 23rd this year, and ask for the board to approve the budget and levy at that time. The 2018 budget basically is pretty much a status quo budget, other than some capital increases. But the operating budget, there's really no changes to our programs, other than some of the strategic things Lisa spoke of, like moving out of the rental business and a few things like that. But level of staffing and so on is remaining the same as 2017. We're looking at $32 million in 2018. That is a million dollars more than the prior year, but that increases all to do with capital in the conservation areas, and I'll speak to that in a few moments.
I agree, it is a million-dollar picture.
Municipal dollars are highly leveraged. For every dollar of levy, there's $2 of revenue from other sources to fund our budget. And the per capita levy in the watershed is going to be about $10.72, which is just up a few cents from the previous year, about a 1% increase on a per capita basis. That's the per capita levy slide. If you look at the budget in the sources of revenue from the main three sources that we account for, self-generated revenues are the largest source of revenue for us at 44%. And the largest portion of that is the conservation area revenues. And Lisa mentioned we've been breaking records with conservation area revenues in the last few years. The weather's been so cooperative, and the demand on our parks just is ever-increasing. So 44% from self-generated. Municipal levy contributes about 36% of our $32 million budget. Government grants account for about 8, or 9% this year. And we'll be bringing 8% out of reserves, mainly for some of those capital increases I spoke of. The general municipal levy will be $11,352 if this budget's approved, which is 2.5% increase over the dollars the previous year. Special projects, that's another aspect of our budget where we account for things that are not funded by levy. And they're typically things we have one-time grants for, and the money flows through, and it has no impact on the budget, or on the levy for the municipalities. But it can affect our budget from year to year if there's a large special project going through. The special projects in this coming year, 2018, are about $3.2 million, down from $3.5 million the year before. But once again, noble municipal levy goes to that. And it's typically things like Source Protection Program and various other environmental programs funded with special grants. So if you look at the expenditures in the categories I just spoke of, the three main categories, our operating programs, our base operating budget is 78% of the 32 million expenditure. That's the largest portion, and that funds all of the regular things we do day-to-day. The base capital programs are 12%, which in 2018 is up a little bit. I think it was about 9% the year before. And as I said, I'll come back to that. It's mainly in the conservation areas. The special projects typically account for about 10% of our budget. So in the operating category, which was the large piece of that pie a moment ago, that's where we pay for all the watershed management programs, the operations of the dams, the flood forecasting, the planning, and all of that stuff, and the management of our nearly 50,000 acres of lands. The conservation area operating expenses come out of there as well, but they are funded fully through, or from, user fee. fully through or from user fees. And then, of course, corporate services and communications and some of those general expenses are in our base operating budget, which is $24.9 million next year, which is about a little less than half a percent higher than the year before. The capital budget for the year is $3.8 million. That is up by about a million dollars. And the main contributing factor to that is the conservation area capital. It's really about retiring one very large camping area at Elora Gorge, and we're putting in sewage forest mains and so on, and moving campsites to an area in the park that is more friendly to the environment. It's an expensive project, but it's undertaken with revenues, surpluses, I'll say, that we've generated in the parks and put aside in reserves, preparing to do this project in the future. So the time has come, and that's all basically coming out of past user fee-generated surpluses in the conservation areas. So even though it's the most significant change in our budget, it really isn't anything surprising and impacting the municipal levy. That $2.7 million number that was put in this slide, I don't believe that's correct. So sorry about that. But that should really say, the water management capital, the first section, is $1.8 million, virtually the same as the year before. The parks and nature centers portion, the second part of this slide, is 1.8, which is quite a bit higher than the year before due to the project I just spoke of. And then there's always a little bit of capital in head office and so on, which is another couple hundred thousand dollars. So the sum of all that is the $3.8 million I spoke of a moment ago, our total capital budget. And then I mentioned the special projects earlier, which is, I think I said it's 10 percent of our spending, and it's all dollars in, dollars out for special things, one-time things, or maybe things that cross a few years with special funding like Source Protection. Of course, the Rural Water Quality Program that your municipality contributes to is part of that as well. The water festivals, things like the Emerald Ash Borer work. We don't consider that part of our base budget because it's not a typical program that we would do on an ongoing basis. And we've asked the province for permission to fund that from some of the reserves we created through the sale of lands in the past. So if you put all that together and allocate that levy of $11,352,000 to the municipalities, most of you are probably familiar with the assessment formula that's used. Basically, the portion of the watershed's assessment that comes from each municipality is used as the basis for distributing the levy among the municipalities. So Brant County in 2017 paid about $354,000 of levy to the Conservation Authority, and it will be $363,592 next year if this budget's approved, which is a 2.7 percent increase. So even though the levy just goes up 2.5 percent, your share goes up slightly. You must be experiencing a little more assessment growth than the average in the watershed is what that means. So that's the end of my slides.
In spite of transfer of lands.
I know, and I'd be happy to speak to that. You're speaking of the Brantford change?
Yes.
And the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry gives us these assessment numbers. And I've been speaking to Heather for the last year and a half about this, and we've asked the ministry to make that change in the assessment. But they're still including the assessment of those lands in the county. And I don't know what we can do about it.
Do we need to take action as a council in that regard?
I think it might be helpful if you...
Yes, we must. Thank you.
It's for your information, the difference, it would probably reduce your levy by somewhere around between $4,000 and $5,000, which would move to the city of Brantford.
How much?
Between $4,000 and $5,000 is our best estimate.
Thank you for that advice. Now, all speakers in, questions? Counselor Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, if we could go back to, in our book, it's 1037, the revenue by source, where you've got it divided up in the little pie there, that one there. Can you just give me an idea of what other municipal would be?
Other municipal? That would be primarily the rural water quality programs. We don't consider that a levy because we don't, you know, bill you under the legislation as part of our program. It's more of a voluntary contribution from the municipalities who participate in it, which is now, how many? There's about six or eight?
About six of them, so.
Yeah. Do you know the total dollars of that, Jill? It's probably getting, it's three-quarters of a million dollars or more now, I would say.
Thank you.
Counselor Cardy, next.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to the presenter. You mentioned that 8 percent of your budget comes from reserves. What are your reserves currently in the GRCA?
Twenty... Sorry, around 21 million.
Yeah. Our reserves, I think I have some detail on that, are getting to about $20 million, $21 million. But more than half of that is controlled by the province. So when we sell land, and of course, some of the land we've sold in the last few years has been very high-valued land, we have to keep it in reserve according to the legislation and use it either for major maintenance of the flood control structures or acquisition of environmentally sensitive lands in the future.
So you have to require a input to the ministry to say, this is what we need to do. We need to take some of the money from the reserves to do this? Or if you're selling properties, the money would go into your reserves account held by the ministry?
That's, well, we hold them, but subject to ministry guidelines. The, just to expand on what you said, we don't have to ask permission of the ministry if we use the reserve funds for the allowed uses. So if we had a major capital project involving one of the flood control structures, we could draw on that money because we have a listing of allowable expenditures or to buy environmentally sensitive...
So if there's a problem with the Shandam or something, you could take the money out of it?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Simons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the group from the GRCA. It's always a pleasure to work with you folks. I would like to just say that our presenter, Keith, is retiring. This will be his last budget that he bring us forward, regrettably. I haven't had much time to work with him, but he's a fantastic guy. But I'd just like to say warm wishes to you in the future, and thank you for being part of us.
Well, thank you, and it's always a pleasure to come to Brant County and present.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's not over yet. Counselor Valma.
It's been good so far.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you. I mean, I'm interested to see that we're forecasted to grow the population in the watershed by about half a million people over the next 34 years. Without major changes in how we deal with our sewage, can the, and also the expectation of more extreme adverse weather events, droughts and what have not, can the Grand River handle the effluent from the sewage treatment plants from the extra half million people? Or are we going to have to be looking at major changes in how we deal with our sewage? If you have the answer, if not, that's okay, but that's just something I've been thinking about because of St. George and everything else.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's actually a great question. It's one of the central questions of our water management plan. We continue to work with our municipal partners through the Water Managers Working Group. There are upstream municipalities working to optimize the sewage treatment plants that they have. It really highlights the importance of our large reservoirs. Without Shand and Conestoga Dam, you'd be in a real fix down here without the discharge from those dams trying to dilute the sewage. But this is an ongoing problem. The technology is getting better, but it's going to have to be something we continue to work on. And it really, again, highlights the importance of continuing to maintain our large reservoirs. If we went through a year where we were not able to fill one of those because of a drought, you would start to see a change in the water quality downstream, just because there just wouldn't be that water to dilute it. So very important problem, very much on our radar, and very much the issue of the future.
Counselor Weet.
We got one retiring. Is that what's happened to Louise Hemmey? Because I don't see her sitting here.
No, no.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We gave Louise a night off tonight. Everybody needs a night off sometimes. So no, Louise is still with us and still a real instrumental part of our Rural Water Quality Program. And you'll see her at the Children's Water Festivals, and she's still with us.
Because I've known her since she was a little child. I think one time I get to see her, once a year, a year, and you don't bring her.
That was an oversight on my part, so I'll talk to her tomorrow.
Counselor Atwood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was interested in the fact that you... Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was interested in the fact that you mentioned the Emerald Ash Borer and the cutting and cleaning up and so on for that problem is not a typical expense in that you've asked for funding from the province. Did you get the funding? Because I'm quite interested, because the municipality runs into dead ash trees as well, and we, I don't believe, have gotten any funding for the ash trees. So please...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can certainly answer that. We were given a flat-out no in terms of grants. The province doesn't have any money to provide us, so we asked to use our reserve, which we have sufficient funding for. They've come back requesting more detail. I haven't given up yet, and we're asking again this week. So we're hard at that one, and we're optimistic that they'll open the purse strings a little bit.
And the funding is for?
For dealing with the hazard trees. So cutting down ash trees that are ready to fall down in areas that there are people that could be harmed if they did fall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the presenters. First of all, thank you for putting up a beautiful accessible building in Ward Four at App Mill. So very much appreciated. The Brant Rural Water Quality money, that's not part of this levy, though. Is that, that's on a separate line item in our budget? I'm not quite sure.
That will be part of this other municipal that we spoke of before. So the municipal levy is 36 percent of our revenue. And then the other municipal funding is where...
And a separate line for us.
It would be, I assume it's a separate line for you, and it's separate for us as well.
Okay, so it's not part of that $10.72 per levy?
And it's not part of the last slide either, where we show the municipal levy broken down?
This is a willing contribution versus a required contribution.
That's correct.
If I could specify that.
Oh, I knew that, but I didn't know if it was there. Okay. And while we're on the topic of water quality, there was a report earlier in the year how the water quality in Lake Erie's not getting any better. Is that our fault? Or are we doing what? Any explanation for that?
I can answer that too, Mr. Mayor. That's actually a multinational problem. It's America and Canada. We are working with the federal and provincial levels of government to come up with a Great Lakes Erie Action Plan, which will identify actions on the landscape that people can take to reduce the phosphorus loading in the lakes. The Rural Water Quality Program is a great example of action that's happening on the ground to actually reduce nutrients into the river. The other things that are happening are the optimization of the treatment plants. But we need senior levels of government to come to the table because this is a bigger problem than one watershed can handle, and we need the Americans to come too, because they're a really big contributor through the watersheds that drain to the western part of Lake Erie Basin. So a big problem. The federal and provincial government has some attention toward it. So far, they haven't opened the checkbook, but that's what needs to happen next.
Not yet.
Not yet is the right, the optimistic response.
So how many areas in the watershed are, have this system? I know Wellington, Gulf does, and Waterloo does.
Region Waterloo, Gulf, Dufferin just adopted it last month, which was great, Brantford. And again, wherever we can find money from other levels of government, we try to apply it in areas where there's not local money.
And just one last question, Mr. Mayor. One thing we would kind of like to see here in the county is, going forward, is low-impact development. Is that a good thing for the watershed or a bad thing for the watershed? Do you guys have a position? Are you promoting it or you don't care? I don't know, just because I don't see you guys every but once a year, so that's why I'm asking about that.
Mr. Mayor, I can't say if it's a good or bad thing for the watershed. It's something that's really dependent on the local geology. It has to be properly designed. We're not in the same position as, say, the credit and the Toronto Region Conservation Authority, where it's so built up, they have to really focus on that. But we still deal with some traditional stormwater management here. I would say, as a water resource engineer, if it's done properly, it's a good thing. If it's not, it's probably not such a good thing.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for your presentation and all the presentations and all of the information accompanying.
Thank you.
Very much. And we'll hope for the best. Now, next is the Long Point Conservation Authority. First to arrive, but had to wait in line until it was coming forward, will be...
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council. Our chair and our vice chair, who both are relatively new to the Board of Directors, had other commitments tonight, and I'm not relatively new.
You're sure they're not out of Comby and Corn?
They, well, no, they're not farmers.
Oh, all right.
They send their regrets, and I'm here to take no more than a half an hour to introduce Cliff, if that will work for you. But I want to thank you, and I did briefly say that these two members are new. And fortunately, that Brant County has assigned Robert Chambers to the Long Point Conservation Authority, and with Robert's experience and expertise, he's a governance junkie, and he really helps to keep the train on the tracks when it comes to Conservation Authority with these two new people. So things are going quite well.
That's good to hear.
That is good news, so thank you, Robert. Things are going quite well at Conservation Authority. Our draft budget is slightly over 6 percent. We're not drawing down on reserves, and in fact, we're anticipating to contribute slightly to reserves. Things are going very well. I was speaking with Cliff on the way over here tonight. I said, how much land does Long Point Conservation Authority own? He says over 2,200 acres in Brant County alone. So good municipal partners with Conservation Authority, and very, very pleased that we are partners. Rather than getting any technical things, you've got some things here. And I'm going to introduce General Manager Cliff Evaniski, and he'll make a short presentation. He's got the other 28 minutes, and with that, we'll be here for questions and answers. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you, Dave. Again, Your Worship, council staff, it's a pleasure to be here on behalf of the Long Point Region Conservation Authority to present to you our draft 2018 budget. So I'll just see if I got the right keys here. Perfect. I think a lot of you appreciate that our watershed covers 2,800 square kilometers, much like GRCA. We have a number of major rivers and tributaries. Of course, the two big being the Big Otter and Big Creek, and an extensive chunk of Lake Erie shoreline, including the Long Point Spit. There is a picture of the watershed. Of course, God's Country is in gold color up in the upper center portion there. I believe with the 2,200 acres that we own there, a big chunk of it being the Hatchley Swamp area, the Long Point Region CA is the second-largest landowner in that particular portion of the county. You know that we offer a wide variety of programs, our education programs. And I believe we're certainly one of the last conservation authorities in this region to still have school board contracts, including with schools in Brant County. Typically, this program, we have two streams of education down at Backus, one historical, the other one environmental. Typically, we're bringing in about 2,000 students. I believe last year, we were over 4,200 students going through those programs. I think all of you appreciate that we have a very active forest management program. We typically manage about 250 to 300 acres a year. I can tell you that, in fact, we tendered two properties in Brant County this past week that brought in $175,000 in revenue to the Conservation Authority, which, of course, we use to try to keep our municipal levy down, as well as support programs. Just to put that in perspective for you, that probably... as support programs. Just to put that in perspective for you, that probably generates, I'm going to say about $70,000 just in labor activity, and then, of course, all the ripple effects that it has for local businesses. There's a map showing our properties, and again, if you look up to the top there, that green clusters is the Hatchley Swamp facility, and actually, the two properties we just tendered are on the south end of that. The red dots that you see are overnight conservation areas, our five main camping areas, which, of course, provide a slew of activities for visitors. I think we bring in about a little over 400,000 visitors to the region. I can tell you, certainly, there are a number of people from Brant and Hamilton area that utilize the Waterford and Norfolk Conservation Areas. We have our Watershed Services Department, of course, which provides a wide range of services. Healthy Watershed, of course, is the stewardship programs that we have with farmers, planting trees, doing riparian buffers, that kind of stuff. The flood forecasting and warning system, which is becoming all the more important these days because of the high lake levels, and, of course, the extreme southwest winds that we've been having lately, and, of course, our planning and regulatory services. And just to put that in perspective, that skyrocketed last year. I think we had 251 planning permits that we did last year, including some up in Brant County, and this year, we've gone over the 321 mark. Of course, there are the stewardship programs. A big chunk, I know, last year, we planted over 2,000 trees up in Brant County. I think everyone here appreciates, of course, with the cost of farmland and rental prices these days, finding marginal pieces of farmland to plant trees on is becoming challenging. We had a string there where we probably were planting roughly 100,000 trees a year. We anticipated 50,000 this year, but we actually planted 92,000. I think part of it might be because you've got 32-foot headers on those combines, and they just can't get into all those little narrow pieces anymore. So, that was arguably good news on one side. So, of course, we have over 11,300 acres of property. We do a lot of habitat work with local landowners and that, and I think you can see, yeah, that's a hog-nosed snake making its way through the grass there, and, of course, riparian buffers, and we're big into, we're getting a lot of farms now coming out and asking us to do wetland creation on their properties, and we are successfully getting some funding out of the province to do that. I think there is a greater appreciation by all of us, especially in drier summers, of the importance of keeping that water on the land to help the local aquifer. Again, we do a lot of work looking after both water quality and water quantity on behalf of the province, as well as our municipal partners. There's, all those dots represent the various points where we're checking water quality, and you can see, again, we're in Brant County up at the Hatchley Swamp there. Again, we provide the technical support. Obviously, a lot of the work we do wouldn't be possible without the stewardship councils, the local Boy Scouts, our municipal partners, and cops and kids and all kinds of good things out there. We also do, a big part of the thing, again, I talked about earlier, flood forecasting. Staff are out there constantly monitoring, and as I say, with the improvements in technology, our ability to forecast and to get that message out to our municipal partners has improved dramatically. I think everyone appreciates, and, of course, this particular service is extremely important to our municipal partners, is helping with development. And, again, I would tell you that after the reg changed, that probably prior to 2006, we probably used to do 30 planning reviews a year, and now we're doing over 300. This particular graph I always like to show you, folks, the green represents the provincial contribution. That's the very bottom line. You can see their contribution has essentially been flatlined since 2007, roughly. We get $68,500 in real money from the province to help look after flood forecasting, look after the 13 water control structures we have. The purple line is you folks, and so you can see, after the cuts of the mid-'90s, you folks have really picked up the slack, appreciating the services that the CAs provide for you. But I want to show you the, so the blue line just above is the provincial contribution and your contribution. Well, obviously, you can see the province hasn't really, you guys have stepped up to the plate, but the province hasn't. But the difference between the blue line and the yellow line is what we self-generate as a Conservation Authority, and you'll notice, as time goes by, that margin keeps getting wider and wider. So, I guess my argument is, for every dollar that you folks are putting into us, we're going out and generating a little more than $2 in return. It's not just simply a case of you give us a dollar and we spend it. We'll use that to go out and try to get matching dollars to make that buck go farther. So, I think we're doing a pretty good job, and we appreciate the support that you guys do to help us get there. One, do you have a question?
Oh, if I may, through you, Your Worship. So, percentage-wise, we're looking at, what, about 60%, 65% self-generated revenue, then?
Yeah, pretty close. So, you'll see when I get to the numbers. Let's see if I, well, I'll just go through this quick. I wanted to talk about the pressure points. Of course, these typically always stay the same. The upper left-hand corner is our Lee Brown Marsh Facility, and it's rather unique for Conservation Authorities. It's an 850-acre marsh that we have west of Port Rowan. I would say 65% of our customers come from the States. It's essentially, we sell duck hunting permits there, and it's been a great revenue generator for us, but you can imagine the US dollar does have an impact, and weather has an impact. Fortunately, with the way the weather is now, with no ice frozen over, we're able to squeeze in some extra customers right now. So, I anticipate we'll have a good year there. Of course, camping, again, it's weather-dependent, but much like our friends at Grand River Conservation Authority, I would say that we're looking at having another good year, that we've gone beyond our revenue targets there this year. Down the left-hand corners, of course, species at risk, and I would tell you that I know while we're in the business of improving habitat and helping bring back these species, that they do also have an impact on our business when it comes to, let's say, doing forest management activities, expanding parks. So, it's not just you folks and developers that have that challenge to deal with. And, of course, our friend, the Emerald Ash Bore down in the right-hand side there, I was actually talking to a wood marker today, and it's interesting now because ash, depending on when you sell it, the prices fluctuate. And I would tell you, the two bushes that we just sold in Brant County were 60% ash that we've just sold, and so I guess it was interesting to hear the previous presentation that, you know, they're seeking help from the province, but I guess our attitude is, let's cut this stuff and see if we can sell it and make a dollar, kind of thing. But some of the ash is actually being shipped back to China now, even if it's infected, which I thought, well, that should be okay because it was infected when it came this way. So, anyways, but it's been interesting, that ash, again, depending on when you hit the market, sometimes the price has actually been pretty decent. The prices we got this week were good. So, there's the overall picture, and getting back to your question. So, municipal levy you'll see is 33%, capital 10%, and actually, I thought, I think the numbers, I think this particular program, when you put that information, it rounds up, but provincial average, I think Conservation Authorities gave about 52% of their funding from their municipal partners. So, our friends at GRCA and ourselves, you can see, we're still both well below the provincial average. So, don't let the provincial funding 6% fool you. That 68 grand I talked about was, it probably adds up to about 0.6 of a percentage point. That other funding that we get out of the province, we have to chase them for. So, there's WECI funding there, which is, we use for doing dam studies and repairs and that kind of stuff. So, it's not money that they just hand over to us, kind of thing. So, and again, community support donations, user fees, logging revenues, revenues from Lee Brown Marsh, our camping facilities. So, just to try to make life a little simpler for you, very top line, you'll see, our total expenditures will come across. You'll see that we're looking at spending an extra 6.3% this year to help us get there, and we'll just come down to sources of revenue. Second column from the right, you'll see 6.1% is what we're looking at in levy increase, or in real dollars right next to it, $110,768. What does that mean for our friends in Brant County? Well, if you go to the very bottom line, come over to this side, we're actually, we're looking for $121,000 overall from you folks, but the increase this year in real dollars is $10,279. So, I guess, in some ways, that presentation by GRCA on the importance of the assessment issue, if that got satisfied, that's essentially half of what we're asking you for this year. So, chase those guys down, okay?
Yes.
So, Your Worship, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you for your presentation. Members of council, please. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Cliff, two questions. First one, those planning applications, are they self-funding? Like, you cover your costs?
So, under the Conservation Authorities Act, you can't get 100% cost recovery from that because the province wants to see the municipal partner because they're benefiting from the development as well, that there has to be a contribution from there. So, our board and their strategic plan a couple of years ago essentially settled on a 60-40 split, 60% recovered, 40% contribution from the municipal partners. I would tell you, we're actually closer to a 70-30 split because of the way the numbers are going, and it's interesting because last year, of those 251 that we did, a lot of them were decks and what I would say were minor development issues. This year, again, we're, you know, over 321. It's all major. It's all major stuff, much like what you guys have got going on up here. It's all big homes, and so needless to say, it's increased our workload significantly, and that's why part of the thing that we've got in this particular budget is another halftime planner to help us with that workload because we've done a couple of service delivery reports for the board to show them where we're at, and we can, on average, regardless of whether it's large or small, and, of course, it all fluctuates, but on average, we're cranking out permits within 10 days.
That's unfortunate, 60-40, but thank you for the information. Second question, does that Bill 148, the minimum wage thing, does that impact you guys very much?
Absolutely. In real dollars, we calculate it out that it's about $36,000, which, for us, is like a three percentage points. So, and that's calculated in this budget.
Counselor Chambers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to begin by thanking Dave for the kind words about being the governance junkie. I prefer governance guru, but I'll let you go on that. But everybody around here knows that, but what they don't know is that I have aphidophobia. So, my question to Cliff, that was aphidophobia. So, my question to Cliff is, this lovely picture of the hog-nosed snake, can you assure me that that creature is in the extreme southern part of the watershed?
Well, through you, Your Worship, to the members, I've been accused of having been in my office at work, but, yeah, no, that picture was from Walsingham area, so.
For those who don't know, aphidophobia is fear of snakes. I'm glad David asked the question about the minimum wage effect on the authority. 3% of the 6% increase can be attributed to the minimum wage increase. Long Point is a little bit unique in this day and age in that the percentage increase is a very small amount of our overall budget. $14,000 adds 1% to the levy. If we buy a pickup truck for $60,000, or maybe Long Point would be $40,000, we'd buy it leased out second-hand, probably. But that impact on the overall budget is significant in terms of percentage increase, but in terms of actual dollars, when it boils down to the contribution of the municipal partners, is not that much. It sounds like a lot, but it's not that much. I'm wondering if Cliff could just highlight to this council what I'll call a turnaround in philosophy of the authority as it relates to drawing down reserves to decrease or moderate or mitigate the levy. I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit over this term of what's been going on there, just so we understand.
Sure, okay. Through you, Your Worship, to the members. So, certainly, Robert's correct in saying that there has been a change in philosophy. I would certainly tell you that in the past, our Conservation Authority has always prided itself on keeping our levy certainly below the provincial average and doing our best so. And certainly, in the past, a lot of our logging revenues were utilized to keep that levy down, and then in this past term, to get us away from what we call deficit financing, because frankly, we were ill-prepared to take advantage of a lot of the funding programs and partnership opportunities that come up when you don't have a healthy reserve. And so, I would tell you, this budget is the third year in a row that there is no drawdown on the reserve. I'm not sure if that's ever happened in our organization's history. Certainly, I could tell you that it hasn't happened since the '90s, for sure. And it's, so, as a result, our unrestricted reserve went from 100 and, I think it was 144,000 two years ago, to roughly 414 this past year in the audit of financial statements, and, you know, an organization with a $4.5 million budget, we should have an unrestricted reserve somewhere in the, you know, the 900 to 1.2 million dollar mark, and what we're finding is more so, and I'm sure the municipalities are, too. Anytime our federal or provincial friends want to come up with a funding program, not only do they give us a very small window of opportunity to get that application in there, you have to have readily available cash. And so, our board recognized that and made some tough decisions to turn things around so that we could have that cash, because frankly, when we get that money, it's helping our municipal partners, right? So, yeah, we're really proud of this budget. I would tell you, it's probably the most strategic budget we've certainly done in my 12 years. Again, we've gotten away from deficit financing. The reserves are not where we want them at, but they're moving in the right direction, and we're in a stronger position to do more work for our partners, right?
Thank you. Any other member have a question? If not, thank you for your presentation and the information you've presented to us.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Your Worship, we have this new thing called e-transfer, so if you don't want to write out checks, we do accept e-transfer. We'll keep that in.
Thank you for attending.
Cash, yes. Well, some of us are oriented that way. OPP is the next presenter.
Welcome. Please proceed when you're...
Setting it up here, sir.
How did the luncheon turn out?
It's fantastic. I'll have to ask you if you enjoyed it.
Oh, it was very enjoyable.
Counselor Atwood was asking me afterwards, the proceeds are going to United Way.
Yes, and they are in great need this year because there's, it looks like, considerable... Yes, and they are in great need this year, because there's a, it looks like a considerable shortfall. Thank you for that.
Okay, sir. And so, building, and then it'll be the bottom one. You know, to change slides, I can do it. I have to open my book, so, so I'll have to slide this over. Yes, I gotta open my book here.
Chair, chair, chair. Sure. Oh, there we go. Flip the chair and the vice chair while available.
Yes, I remember. Yes, that's right. Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's, it's good to be here. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Milson, I'm, uh, the acting inspector detachment commander for the County of Brant OPP. Uh, I'm very pleased to be able to be here tonight to provide you details with the OPP annual billing statement for 2018. I am a bit of an old school, as I'm sure you can tell, so I'm gonna use a binder rather than reading off the computer, so, um, there we go. So, I'll, first I want to do is review, obviously, the financial picture, and then I'll talk about some of the, uh, programs that we're involved with. On this slide, um, you'll see two key areas of the billing estimate. Those are municipal-based services and calls for service. So the costs allocated to various municipalities are based on the total costs assigned to OPP detachment staff performing municipal policing activities across the province. A statistical analysis of activity in detachments is used to determine the municipal policing workload of all detachment-based staff, as well as the percentage allocation of municipal workload between base services and calls for service. There's a 3.56% portion of the total cost of those base services and calls for service, which equals $13.8 million. That's deducted before the final calculations are made. This percentage is known as the provincial services usage, and it represents that portion of employees working provincial duties, and is not billable to the County of Brant. So an example of this is when officers are working, let's say, Pan Am Games or the G8. For 2018 billing purposes, the allocation of the total municipal workload in detachments has been calculated to be 57.4% for base services and 42.6% for calls for service. So first, I'd like to deal with the base services. Uh, this charge represents municipal costs related to keeping the lights on, maintaining basic proactive policing services such as patrols, crime prevention, ride programs, training, and administration. The base services cost is determined by multiplying the number of properties in a municipality by the standard province-wide average cost to police those properties. The number of municipal properties is based on MPAC data, and the most recent MPAC data is for 2017, and it shows Brant having a total of 14,714 properties, and those are comprised of 13,930 households and 784 commercial industrial properties. These numbers include the annexation that was in effect as of 2017. So the 2018 province-wide average cost per property is $191.35, and that's a number that's fluctuated very little over the last four billing cycles. So multiplying that 191.35 by the almost 15,000 properties results in a total estimated cost for base services of 2.8, well, 2,815,524. So that's the Part A. Part B is the calls for service, and that cost represents costs related to municipal policing services that are reactive in nature and usually require a police officer's attendance. So there are 314 types of calls for service that are billable to municipalities. Municipality pays a proportionate share of the total cost of calls for service across the province, based on the average number of calls and the types of calls recorded for a particular municipality. There are 66 OPP detachments in the province, and we provide policing services to 323 municipalities. So the calls for service cost is based on what's called a weighted time average, a weighted time standard, and that's applied using a four-year average of the amount of time it takes to deal with each of those calls for service. So the total billable calls for service expense for all OPP police municipalities across Ontario in 2018 is estimated to be $150,757,055. Given our workload here in Brant, the County of Brant has been calculated at just over 1.46% of the total provincial municipal calls for service. This share works out to a total estimated cost to the County of Brant for calls for service only of $2,203,700. This equates to $149,73 per property. Next, I'd like to look at overtime. Municipalities are billed for overtime resulting from occurrences in their geographic area. Municipalities are not charged for overtime resulting from the provincial services usage. The overtime activity for calendar years 2013 through 2016 has been analyzed and averaged to estimate the 2018 cost. So the total estimated overtime cost for the County of Brant for 2018 is $172,680. Next, I'd like to talk about prisoner transportation. The estimated cost for prisoner transportation, based on 2016 activity, is $32,224. This cost will be reconciled to actual 2018 hours and salary rates for the 2020 annual billing statement. It should be noted that the County of Brant has been allocated $24,743 in court security and prisoner transportation grants, which will offset about 76% of the 2018 prisoner transportation cost. This is subject to any adjustments if they're applicable. The grant money will be paid to the county in two installments, 25% in February and 75% in September of 2018. So to sum up, the estimated cost for 2018 base services, calls for service, overtime, and prisoner transportation combined is $5,223,497. That's before 2015 and 2016 adjustments are factored in. The OPP billing model is designed to reduce significant, significant cost fluctuations once cost recoveries are reconciled and subsequently factored in. This model accomplishes this through increased use of multi-year averages of key components that drive costs. 2018 marks the first time that prior year-end adjustments have been included in the estimate calculations, a process that will continue in subsequent years. The current reconciliation amounts shown factor in delays settling collective agreements for uniform and civilian staff when those exact salary figures weren't known. Therefore, salary estimates, rather than known figures, were used for both 2015 and 2016 billing years. It is interesting to note, though, that the, this reconciliation process of this two-year period resulted in net year-end adjustments that were within 1% for 85% of the municipalities across Ontario. So on the 2018 billing statement, these reconciled numbers are shown as the 2015 and 2016 year-end adjustments you'll see on the bottom two lines. For the County of Brant, these reconciliations have created a positive year-end adjustment for both 2015 and 2016 billing years, resulting in a combined total credit on this billing statement of just under $113,000. This amount has been deducted from the total estimated cost to provide a grand total billing for 2018 of $5,119,519. This equates to $425,877 per month, or about $347.32 per property. So what does this mean? When comparing the 2017 and 2018 billing statements, you'll notice a slight change probably from the material you have. This is from Municipal Policing Bureau as of today. The estimated cost reduction of 1.65% over last year represents a saving to the county or cost reduction this coming year of $85,792. As you know, the detachment also collects revenue on behalf of the County of Brant for the preparation of occurrence reports, security checks, accident reports, professional reports, and fingerprints. This additional revenue is not included in the billing statement estimates, and the monies are paid to the County of Brant through a credit anticipated in February or March of 2018. So as we move to the different categories of billable calls, I'd like to point out that this report does not reflect all calls for service that the police respond to in our community. The annual billing statement is based on nine billable or billing work groups. These include violent criminal code, property crime, other criminal code, drugs, statutes enacted, traffic, and operational matters. All calls for service that fall outside these nine classifications are not billed to the municipality. So for all billed calls in these nine work groups, only the primary violation, or the, what we call the most serious offense, is counted as a call for service. So if there's an assault and a theft in the same incident, um, the assault will be counted as the primary violation, and the theft, the time involved in the theft wouldn't be charged to the county. So because of this, these numbers are not used for crime trend analysis to show accurate numbers of events, and they only form a percentage of the calls for service that are billed to the county. For example...
Heard a question.
I'm sorry.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, if I could, so, I'm, I'm just trying to understand here, so...
What?
We're, the 2018 budget...
Yes.
...has no input at all from what happened in 2017. Am I, am I understanding that?
No.
Because from what I'm seeing here in all these slides, it's, it's a, it's a four-year trend, a four-year average, but it only goes to 2016.
Well, 2017 isn't concluded, and it's, we can't get that data to, to really impact into next year, it's too soon, so they use data from a couple of years back, and they do that in advance every, every year, they look at the, the next two years, so. So next year will be 2016, 17, because 17 would be known.
Right, so they don't, like, okay, 'cause, 'cause where I'm, where I'm going with this here is, and, you know, hopefully the numbers don't go that way, but what if 2017 was an absolutely, you know, brutal year for all different kinds of calls? And then all of a sudden, we may be cutting ourselves short here by not factoring those into what we're allocating for the next year's budget?
Well, I think I'll go on here and make, make a bit more sense as I proceed, but we're, we're charged a percentage of the calls across the province, so if ours go up, it's a fraction of what the whole province is experiencing, and you're, you're paying on that percentage of what the province is looking at as a whole. So it's not like if Brant County goes up 20%, the bill goes up 20%. It's a fractional amount of all the calls that occur across the province.
Okay, thank you for that. And if I could, Mr. Mayor, are you able to go back one slide there? I'm just trying to, can you just confirm for me again why the, the numbers, because the, the 2017 and 2018 numbers that you had there, the $5,308 and the, the $5,110, those are the same, and it does give that $198,000 savings. I, I'm, I'm trying to understand, 'cause you had an 85 or something up there. Yeah, right there.
Yeah, um, I had said that the estimated cost reduction was 1.65%, and that we're representing an $85,792 cost reduction.
Right, but, but again, if you take the, the $5,110 and, from that $5,308, it does give the $198,000, so I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, that, okay. The, um, I, I was checking these figures today with our Municipal Policing Bureau. The, the actual percentage that was given to you, you probably have, is a little different.
Okay.
It's 3.65, I think, on the slide that you were given. Municipal Policing Bureau is telling me it's 1.65, actually.
Yeah, my apologies there. It's, it's within the bracket, so you've taken off the...
Right. So there's prior year adjustments that come into play there.
My apologies, thank you.
Counselor Cardy?
Thank you, Mayor Eddy, and I think this is more towards a question for you, Mayor Eddy, 'cause maybe you can help me understand this, as a policy thing with the province in regarding to this process. So am I to understand that it's the minister who determines the department, how their s... I, I don't understand why would we collectively want to find out all of Ontario for the OPP on how many this and how many of that there are? I care about Brant County. I don't care about what happens in Thunder Bay, I don't care about what happens other where. I worry about Brant County, and for it to all be figured into one pot...
But it's based on the total.
But, but that's irrelevant to me. As a counselor in the County of Brant, that's irrelevant to me.
Well, that's...
Uh, Woodstock Police don't do that, because they look after Woodstock.
That's, that's correct.
But the OPP in Brant County are the Brant County OPP, they're not, they're not the Thunder Bay OPP.
But, Miss, Counselor Cardy, this is the OPP system. It's the way it's done. It's the way, and we have input into it through AMO. We've had, uh...
I know that, sir. I understand that.
Opportunities to, to, and there's been agreement to accept that, uh, province-wide, at least those municipalities that are in the OPP system. It's an ongoing situation where things are still being examined, but that's what it is today.
And your worship, another question is, is we see here, and, and maybe I don't understand this correctly, and this has no bearing on the people at the OPP detachment...
Right.
...what I'm talking about, it's the overall process, it's nothing to do with the staff or the people. It's the process. Prisoner transportation, if you're going to a provincial court, why should I pay for the prisoner to be taken to a provincial court?
Problem says you shall.
Well, you see, there's, that's another issue.
It's what it is.
A provincial decree, simple as...
It has nothing, for me, it has no, no bearing on the, the staff they have at the OPP. I think they're great people, I really do. The process is messed up.
Do you wish to respond?
I can tell you that across the province, there, when the previous billing model was in place, it ran for about 17 years, something...
Changes.
Up to 2014. Some municipalities were paying $6 a property, some municipalities were paying $800 a property.
Yes.
So to make it equitable across the province, especially for the base costs where there were detachments in every place, but some people, some municipalities weren't paying their fair share.
Correct.
So it averaged out across the province to make it fair and equitable to every citizen in the province that we police. I can tell you, and I don't have the exact figures, you certainly will have this in your own knowledge, but my understanding is, uh, the County of Brant's probably saved over $2 million in the last two years, so it has worked to the advantage of Brant to go into this billing model, because it's saved over $2 million in the last two years alone. That's because it's been averaged out across the province. That's my input, anyway.
But I think it's also determined by what the value of that $2 million is, too. Everything has a value.
Counselor Simons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the presenter. Um, the prisoner transportation on the first page, um, have they established the home for the prisoners in Hamilton as of yet? And if they have, will that cost, is that reflected in this cost here, that you'll have to be taken to Hamilton instead of Branford?
The cost, um, to move our prisoners, uh, is not going to change. The offender transport unit will be doing it at no extra cost to the County of Brant.
Good, okay.
Uh, we had a meeting with them today, um, and my understanding from their representative is it will not cost Brant any more money. They will be housed in Hamilton, the male offenders, and the youth and females won't change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Gatler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess one of the things I might say in response to Counselor Cardy's...
A point of order, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we need to be debating each other.
No.
The presentation is ongoing, so if you want to debate each other, do it afterward. Let's hear the presentation, and we can go from there. You may not agree with everything everybody says, but let's hold that until the presentation's over.
And, 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 Mr. Mayor, I agree, I think the presentation got a little derailed by the questions. However, I wasn't going to debate, Mr. Mayor.
A point of order, Mr. Mayor. Let's hear the presentation. We don't need to be discussing and debating with each other.
Yes, we have gotten off track.
Let's, let's honor the gentleman and, and listen to him, rather than each other.
I would ask Counselor Gatler to leave her question to the end of the presentation. Please proceed.
It's a comment, and I will.
Thank you. Thank you. So we were discussing the nine work groups that I talked about. And we were talking about the primary violations. So because of this, these numbers weren't used for crime trend analysis. And they form only a percentage of the calls for service that are billed to the county. For example, in 2016, the County of Brant was billed for 5,800 calls for service. However, we actually investigated almost 13,000 calls for service, representing a saving to the county of approximately 7,000 calls for service that were not billed that year. So on this slide, you'll note a 2.5% increase in billable calls for service between 2015 and 16. Our analyst gave me a quick overview of some of the reasons for this. There was an increase in bail violation and breach of probation occurrences. There was an increase in contraband tobacco occurrences, and we seized over, sorry, we seized over 1.5 million cigarettes worth of contraband tobacco in 2016, with a street value of over $700,000. There was also an increase in neighbor dispute, unwanted person, landlord-tenant, and animal-related occurrences. Regarding traffic collisions, these include fatal, personal injury and motor, and property damage. There was a negligible difference in the numbers noted from 2015 to 2016. Again, these are billable motor vehicle collisions, and they represent only a portion of the actual collisions that our detachment members respond to. As the County of Brant is not billed for collision investigations occurring on provincial highways, 403 and 24. So we investigated 1,237 actual motor vehicle collisions in 2016. The county was billed for 613 of those. Currently, our motor vehicle collision rates are decreasing. This is due to our continued participation in focused patrols, our collision trend analysis by our analyst, to identify hotspots in the community, commercialized, sorry, commercial motor vehicle blitzes, the use of automated license plate recognition technology, and cooperative patrols with the OPP Highway Safety Division, along with extensive media reminders. We'll be continuing to support our current long-term focused patrol initiatives, dealing with impaired driving, speed, distracted driving, and seat belts through 2018. This slide discusses violent criminal code analysis. In this particular work group, there include crimes against persons, including homicide, attempted murder, assault, threats, and robbery. During 2016, we reported 202 billed violent criminal code incidents, which was an increase of over 12%, 12.8% when compared to 179 in 2015. This, however, still remain below the four-year average for these types of calls. The increase can be attributed to assaults, including assault with a weapon and criminal harassment. With regard to simple assaults, those have decreased by 17.5%. The majority of offenses regarding property crime violations include arson, break-and-enter, theft, possession of stolen property, mischief, identity theft, and some types of fraud. During 2016, we reported 734 billed criminal, property crime incidents, which represented a decrease of almost 10% compared to the 2015 property crime occurrences. This decrease can be attributed to a drop in break-and-enter and shoplifting occurrences. We'll continue to support property crime investigations through our focused patrol strategy and the utilization of our newly formed Community Street Crime Unit. This slide deals with drugs and drug possession, which includes trafficking, production, importation, and possession of drugs such as marijuana, cocaine, heroin, crystal meth, and other controlled substances. During 2016, we reported 107 billed drug occurrences, which was a 9.2% increase when compared to the 98 billed drug occurrences in 2015. This increase can be attributed mostly to occurrences involving the possession of marijuana.
Right.
And regarding mental health calls for service, it has become one of our top priorities in the OPP, both locally and across the province. This graph outlines actual mental health calls for service, indicating 7.4% decrease in calls between 2015 and 2016. So far in 2017, we see a decrease, we continue to see a decrease, and are currently looking at a 23% reduction in mental health calls over last year, which we're very happy about. In my view, this can be attributed to the implementation of the Mobile Crisis Rapid Response Team Strategy, with which Inspector Liptrout pioneered this, earlier this year. I can tell you, that strategy is working very, very well. And I will be writing a grant application to further funding into 2018, so we can continue. I'll have more on that in just a minute. So I'm almost near the end here. I just wanted to talk about a few of the 2017 highlights. The first involves community engagement. And some of you who sit with the Police Services Board, this will be older news, but the County of Brant OPP, I think, has done an excellent job with community engagement, with a very large percentage of that success directly attributable to the hard work of our community. Safety Officer Constable Ken Johnson. Ken completes our media releases, coordinates our community events, and as our High School Resource Officer, attends the Brant Safety Village, teaching our children about safety issues, and coordinates the Safety Patrol Program as well as much more. A few 2017 highlights that our detachment was involved with were the OPP Kids Camp at Tim Horton's Onondaga Camp, the Paris and Burford Fairs, Pinehurst Discovery Day, and Applefest in St. George. Our upcoming events include the EMS, excuse me, Food Drive for the Paris Christmas Hamper Initiative, and the Paris and St. George Christmas Parade. So you may see us out there, including myself, at a grocery store near you in the coming weeks. We've also, we also have a member who acts as the OPP Representative on the Brant Community Response Team, or what we call the Situation Table. During 2016, we brought 34 persons to the Situation Table who were deemed high-risk to the community or to themselves. So far in 2017, we've seen 42 people at high risk brought to the table. Everyone that we have presented has been accepted for referrals with community support agencies. We've helped individuals as young as eight years of age and as old as 90 get connected with needed services through this twice-weekly consultative process. During 2016, we enhanced our officer involvement in the delivery of the OPP Kids Program. Specially trained frontline detachment members are assigned to one or more Grade Six classes to teach topics such as youth in the law, peer-to-peer, online and social media, and drug awareness. This school year, we have 10 officers assigned to deliver the OPP Kids Program to 25 classes in 13 of our schools. This represents over 600 of our children who will receive positive messaging from the same officers that police their community. And when I got here, only one officer was doing that, and I asked all the shifts to combine, to come together, and pick officers who were interested and who wanted to have that interaction. And so we used those initially, and now we've changed some of them up for this year, and we'll do the same for next year. So hopefully, all those kids will have a personal connection with their police. Mental health strategy I spoke about a few minutes ago. Starting in January 2017, we began partnering with St. Leonard's Community Services and the Brant Community Health Care System in a cooperative effort to enhance responses to those in our community who are experiencing mental health crisis. And this partnership has seen significant improvements in the support of people in crisis, including a much more effective policing response. Really important that we are experiencing increased diversion rates away from the hospital emergency department. And we have many more effective referrals to appropriate community agencies that apply or assist with improved transfers of care as well. So this is resulting in lowering hospital wait times and less repeat calls for service. Potential is that it could also help lower the billing statement in years to come with less calls for service, dealing with people in crisis. What's interesting is we've recently just increased our complement to two mental health workers who are attending calls and providing follow-up services. And we've gone from a couple of times a week to every day from 9 till, 9:00 in the morning until 11:00, Monday to Friday. So it's almost a full-time service. Victim Services of Brant engagement, from 2015 to 2016, we increased our referrals of victims of crime to Victim Services of Brant by altering our referral process and putting in additional accountability measures. During 2015, we had 130 referrals, rising to 156 last year. And so far this year, we have 110 people that were referred to Victim Services for assistance. Regarding traffic collision reduction and enforcement, we continue to work with our County of Brant Collision Reduction Committee, involving the Brant County OPP, our Highway Safety Division, the County of Brant Public Works Road Division, Ministry of Transportation, the Ministry of Natural Resources, and the Insurance Bureau of Canada. The committee was formed to develop motor vehicle collision reduction strategies, which have included Don't Veer for Deer, the campaign, commercial motor vehicle safety initiatives, local enforcement initiatives and public education at local events, and the media through our Community Safety Officer. So going into 2018, those priorities remained very similar. One significant item on the list for next year and into 2019 involves, of course, the building of our new detachment, which we're very excited about, as I know you are. We're well on our way to breaking ground on the new Brant County OPP detachment. Currently anticipated to start in the spring of 2018, I understand. We're going through the final consultations now regarding accommodations, building design services, road access, and more, and before it goes to the Detachment Build Committee for review. One exciting aspect out of this has been the involvement of the County of Brant Fire Service in designing additional space within the building for use as the new County Emergency Operations Centre. Occupancy is estimated to be in the fall of 2019, two years from now. So I guess in closing, prior to any questions, I would like to thank all of you for your kind attention and for your continued support to the women and men who police our community.
Thank you for your presentation and the information you presented. We'll return to questions. Counselor Gatler has the first question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess what I wanted to say is that we have the use of the OPP resources, the helicopter, the dogs, heavy armored vehicles. And earlier Counselor Cardy, you know, mentioned that he's not, he only wants to hear about Brant County. Well, all those resources that we have the ability to use in Brant County, I believe everything gets factored into the whole province, and we all share in the cost. That's part of the new billing model. It's different from the old billing model. Totally different. And it was reviewed, as Mayor Eddy said, by AML. Councillors had opportunity to comment. There was an extensive consultation process. So I don't know if that helps him or not, but that's what I wanted to say earlier. And I want to thank Jim for the presentation. And we hope that crime will stay down, and speeding as well. I know we have a lot of speeding issues in the county. But I think that your local detachment here is doing a great job in Brant. I don't get complaints from the public normally about our police service, so thank you very much.
It's good to hear. Thank you.
And did you have a question, officers? Please.
No, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, Counselor Cardy. Counselor Cardy.
Thank you. And I just want to say, too, that Inspector, Attman Inspector, you know, it's, and I'm very pleased with the opioid and fentanyl seminar you had. It was very good and well-attended, I must say. It was very good.
Yes.
And I'm not going to belabor this. All I'm going to say is, I ask those questions because I work for the people in the County of Brant. That's why I'm concerned for the people in the County of Brant, not the province of Ontario.
Thank you. Counselor Simons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, through you to the presenter. I've heard, and it is hearsay at this point with me, excuse me, that the schools in Toronto are, or certain schools, are pulling the rope, their police force. I assume that's a school board decision. I don't know, though, if it is or not. But have you heard anything coming down the tubes about possibility of our school liaison being pulled?
Well, you should be dealing with the province on that. That's a provincial decision, not an OPP decision. I don't believe that.
I can certainly give you my opinion on it, and it's really based on media. My understanding from the media, it was a school board decision to do that. I can tell you the City of Toronto Police, you know, they're facing some severe financial issues and cutting back staff, from my understanding. We have no intention of reducing our availability of our officer. As a matter of fact, probably increasing it by having other officers go to augment Constable Johnson.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for the answer.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. While some of the earlier discussion was going on, I did a little bit of quick research, and the average per capita police cost in Woodstock is over $300 per person per year. And we're at 140. So thank you for your good work. My question for you is, do you know how much money was raised today for the United Way at the barbecue?
After all those numbers, it comes down to the United Way. I wish I'd spent more time studying that. Staff, do you have any idea? I'm sorry, but you know, I'd be glad to get back to Heather with that number for tomorrow. Thank you, sir. I do appreciate all the support today for those that were able to come out. We also had an auction of some items, and we're going to be donating all that, of course, to United Way for our community, so.
Counselor Cardy.
Thank you, your worship. One question I wanted to ask was, because of the crisis we're seeing with opioids and the continued use of opioids, and now the fentanyl crisis that we're going through, is there going to be greater emphasis put on this and how to deal with this as a police force? I know, I don't know, are your officers carrying, is it Narcan? I guess it is?
Naloxone.
Naloxone. Are they carrying that as well now? And that would help the victim or themselves, or? I just wanted to understand that, because it's getting to be an epidemic. We're seeing it all over North America now.
We are, for sure, and it is a province that's continent-wide. I can tell you, on the topic of naloxone, our force decided to outfit each officer with two doses that they carry with them every shift. And the primary purpose is for self-rescue, because you can't deal with something if you're affected. And our officers are handling sometimes unknown substances, and even a trace amount can cause death. I'm told that a grain of carfentanil can cause death, a grain of salt size. So our officers are trained to use it. We all had to have a training session this year on that. And the additional dose, of course, is available if someone needs it and in our care, so, prior to ambulance arriving. And I know that it has already been used in the OPP to do that and save a life, so we're very pleased about that. As far as the enforcement of it, I mean, this is a continent-wide problem at the very least, if not larger than that. The OPP is doing its part. As you mentioned, the opioid program, we've presented that locally, I think in four occasions, if I'm not mistaken. I've been to at least, well, I've been to one of them, and very well attended by a lot of people from various disciplines. So there's a lot of interest in it. So there's a lot of interest in it. We're going to continue to do that, Counselor. What we're also doing detachment-wise, the OPP has taken its Community Drug Action Team members and amalgamated them into our Community Street Crimes Unit. So where one member used to try to tackle drug issues in the community, they're now amalgamated into a bigger unit. In our case, seven different officers, combined with Oxford and Brant, that are handling property crimes but also drug occurrences. And so I think we've increased our capacity locally to help deal with that. I can say that, from my understanding, it is not an epidemic in this local area. There are, we are seeing seizures of it, for sure, and it's coming in from offshore across the country, very quickly, I would say. We are highly aware of it and are doing what we can.
Thank you. Constable Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. First one, that new detachment, there was talk at one time maybe making it, if we could, a regional, you know, detachment, so because we're right by the 403. Have you heard anything about that?
Well, the only regional office we have is in London. That's our regional headquarters, but.
Maybe a super detachment is what I'm thinking.
Well, probably more specifically, it's an enhanced detachment. It might be the better way to put it. It's certainly at almost twenty-three thousand square feet is a large facility. And when I first got involved in discussions with this with Inspector Liptrot, I raised the possibility of a larger room for training purposes. Because my thought was, rather than having detachments in the area do their own individual training, it would be nice to have them come as a hub and for various training. And that was turned down at the deputy commissioner level, because every detachment has a base size. And Robin and I have been having lots of discussions about office sizes and things, but it is a set size, a square footage. However, the county in its foresight has put in place this potential of an emergency operations centre, which will enlarge that space that was provided by the OPP. And the county's going to pay that portion of the enlargement. Well, it creates a very large space for meetings now, and so what hasn't worked one way has worked the other way, hopefully, if everything goes through as designed. And then we will be able to bring area detachments in to do training here locally. I can also tell you that we've already got two out of potential four Highway Safety Division officers from London that are now reporting to our detachment. One of them is a technical collision investigator and what they call a recon, a very, very highly-trained individual. Now, we have two of them working out of our detachment, helping with major crashes. And so those two officers, they'll use our detachment as a base, but they'll also be available for calls for service. And if something happens, it's two extra bodies to help manage that. So we're very excited about that. And my understanding is, when we get the building done, we have allocated space that will be available for a traffic sergeant and three officers. So it will enhance our ability to do training and to have extra people.
I'd like to see that, because it's a good location, as you know. You can whip down twenty-four to get to the south. We're near Six Nations. We're close to Hamilton. We can go to London, so.
Could we use a different term to whip? I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't want to use the word speed, but, okay.
We're very excited about that location. It's great.
Second question, and thank you for presenting that budget, but to me, it's somewhat opaque. Alls I know is, we're going to cut you guys a check for just over five million dollars, and our policing's taken care of.
And again, you can do that e-transfer, and it can come right to my account.
I looked at the statement, and now I go, we're spending millions on the new bill. So maybe this is a better question for the treasurer, I don't know. So are we going to spend less on hydro and natural gas, and how much are you spending on fuel for your cars? Like, that's all incorporated in there? I don't know how that works. Is this just all wages for OPP guys?
Well, the base cost that I mentioned includes the infrastructure, the cars, the fuel, the clothing, all that stuff. That's the preventive, ours is one point four six percent, roughly, of the whole province, right? So whatever that cost of is for the whole province of over two million dollars, our percentage of that for all the detachments and all the infrastructure and staffing and all that.
So, sorry to interrupt, but that kind of go back to what Constable Carty said then. So if we get a more energy-efficient building, that really doesn't impact it then, because you're taking the whole provincial amount. That's what it seems like, that's all.
I mean, that building, I have no personal history, other than we're in a sixty-year-old post office. It's hard to do business in what we have, we make do. The council has decided that they would like to spend the money. I can't, I can't comment on the efficiencies involved in it. Hopefully, from a perspective of energy, that we're going to save as much money as we can through design, but I don't know what to tell you about the building itself. It's, you know, our, the county is paying for this, for a lot of the build and having it designed, you know, along with the OPP, working in partnership and.
I think.
It's a decision that was made, so.
With the bill, don't we, we bill the OPP for using that building?
Right.
And I think that, I assume that's the only revenue we would get out of it. I don't know.
No, the chairman, I have to ask the chairman, do you wish that to be responded to? And what are we debating here?
Well, I'm just talking about the budget. I'm talking about the budget. We're going to be spending several million dollars on.
But are we debating the way the OPP bills us? Is that basically what it is? Because that's not debatable.
No, I understand that.
It is not. What has happened, the municipalities of Ontario that have OPP contracts have had representation, a committee through AMO, have been dealing this with years, and there've been changes and changes. There's been agreement to some degree on that. And if you want to get into that, that's an entirely different matter to what we're talking about with this budget. It's entirely different matter, and I cannot allow that. That's not the purpose of this meeting tonight.
Could I ask one clarifying question, Mr. Mayor?
What is the question?
We're spending millions on a new OPP building. Does that, will that impact the budget at all in the future? And I think the answer's no.
Does it affect the budget?
Will it affect the OPP budget?
Of course it'll affect our budget. It'll affect our budget. It's our building.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify a little bit, it's the municipality's responsibility to provide the facility. That includes all of the utilities. So we may find some efficiencies in the utilities that we would be paying for anyway. It's not reflected in the OPP billing. The only revenue that we will receive is the rent for the provincial portion.
Yes.
Of the detachment.
Paid by the OPP.
Correct.
Yes. And we know that. That's from the beginning. Thank you. Constable Chambers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a statement, and I have a question on the billing model.
Oh, thank you.
It's my understanding, after hearing the presentation, that the only, essentially the only way that the municipality can mitigate the cost is by reducing the call numbers.
Yes.
By and large. On the slide in front of us, there are ways that, strategies that the OPP have used, and some in partnership with other organizations, including the county, to mitigate the number of calls, which would decrease the budget. You mentioned the collision reduction strategy, working with the county on the Veer for Deer. And I see the county has signs up with flashing lights, warning people with deers. So theoretically, that is an action taken by the Public Works Department to reduce collisions, which would reduce the calls, which would reduce the police budget, which is kind of all interconnected. So my question is, what is the mechanism, what, that you can see how the municipality can work with the OPP on various strategies to mitigate the number of calls, which would lower our budget? What can we do with the OPP to improve our budget costs? You've listed a few, and I'm more concerned about the mechanism. How do we sit down with you, or you sit down with us, to devise strategies to reduce the call numbers?
It's a bit of a tough answer, because, as I said, the municipality is not billed for all the calls for service. Matter of fact, when I use the number thirteen thousand and we charged or billed for fifty-eight hundred, that's a significant difference that the county is already not paying for. And I don't think there is anything that the county itself can do. I mean, we work in partnership with County Roads to use Speed Spy technology and to identify areas where it's a liability for the county. I deal with Mike Tout a fair bit, and we go to every collision where there's a potential for legal activity against the county. That's something that Mike and I talked about when I first got here. And so if there's a potential the county is going to be sued, a personal injury or death, the county goes to those and does measuring, I understand, of the roadway and things like that. So we've worked with the county on the reduction of risk or traction of risk to the county. The main thing with, you know, with those accidents you speak about, I mean, it's not so much a savings to the county. I know it's important, and we're talking dollars, but it is about life and about saving lives and risk reduction. Of course, sir.
I understand. I'm just keying on the budgets. I want what your answer was, even if we can reduce by ten percent on call volume here, that doesn't really even affect our budget because of the calculation as compared to the products as a whole. So really, if that's the case, there's not a lot we can do to mitigate the cost of police, cost of police. We can maybe mitigate our liability and save it elsewhere. We can save on the tap and headwinds, but the actual bill of the police, there's not a lot we can do as a municipality to reduce that.
Well, if I could, I'll give you another way to look at this, Counselor, is that when you were asked for your opinion on this new billing model, everybody provided it. The province was offering you the ability to save money. And it's come up with a model that's helped to reduce costs by over two million dollars in a few years. I don't think the county or the OPP could have done that on their own, to Constable Carty's point. And I think that's something the county did. It was proactive thinking originally to say, you know what, this can save us money. Candidly, there are municipalities across this province that didn't do as well, maybe the ones that were paying six dollars a property. But the ones that were paying eight hundred and five dollars are seeing a reduction to the average of, I think it was three hundred and forty-six dollars a property this next year. So I think that was foresight on the county's part, and you've already done the heavy lifting, if you will. From an individual point of view, again, we're working with county branches to do things, like with County Roads, to save a little, again, a million-dollar lawsuit is a lot better than trying to knock down a couple of break-in enters. It's all important, don't get me wrong, and I don't mean to be facetious, but I think those are forward-thinking as well. We see the big picture of trying to reduce costs for the county.
What you're saying is, that we can use the place, work with the place to reduce our overall budget.
Yes.
The bill from the OPP essentially.
The bill from the OPP will be based on the provincial, the collective of all the calls for service, and that's how it works, yeah, based on properties versus calls for service.
From 2018 or 2019, there's nothing really we can do to change that.
No.
But what we can do is work with the OPP to save in other areas in the County of the OPP as well to do that. Good to hear.
Yes. Thank you.
Constable Powell.
Through you to the acting inspector. You've been able to have use of that special car with the technology to read the license plates and get a printout on the officer's computer if there's any charges against them. Will we have the funding to perhaps expand that program and have more vehicles with that special equipment on it?
I love that question. Initially, when I looked into this, when I was at Norfolk County, the cost to acquire that technology was thirty thousand dollars a car. Information I have from just the other day was that that's reduced significantly now with new technology. In that, the county acquires some money from fines that are paid. My view is, if people are charged, if they're operating a vehicle in a manner they shouldn't be, or with other proper licensing, or they're suspended and they're charged and there's a fine component, the county does receive that, and that is a benefit to the county. I would argue that spending the money on one or two of those units, as we've done with the Speed Spy technology and things like that, helps protect the community from drivers who are risking. And my experience in thirty-two years is that people who are risk-driving without insurance will be risky in other areas as well. And so the more we have, the chance we have to interdict people like that, the safer our community is. And so while I don't have exact figures for you right now on the current cost for that, I think it would be money very well-spent by the county in the long run, and you would reap a benefit of it financially.
Constable Carty.
Thank you, your worship. And Inspector, as we grow as a county, how is it determined that we'll need more constables or police officers on the road? How is that determined? Is there a model for that, or a funding model that you work by to do that? Because I had some questions about, as we grow, are we going to add more police officers to the?
Well, what's built into this model, and as we've always done it, is enhancements to the contract. And that's probably what we utilize. In the short term, because we're provincially deployed, we can call in resources from other detachments to use. If we have a shift that may be short for a particular reason, one night of illness or whatever, we can call from, and we do, call from other detachments to augment. We are able to police with the people that we have, and we do, I think we do a very good job. If it comes to pass with all the infrastructure that's coming to Brant and the housing and things, that we feel that we need more police because of calls for service are increasing, then that would come to an enhancement that the county would vote on and pay extra for. Because again, the base model is the base model. And there's no, as my commissioner says, there's no extra pot of money, Jim. Because I ask him occasionally about extra things, and there is no extra money.
But if numbers increase, then you can say, hey, look, we know that this is increasing.
Right. One of the things that happens, too, is that every region, and we're in West Region, so from Tobemory down to Windsor and over to Wellington, Guelph area, there's a specific pot of money that manages West Region. And that doesn't really go up or down. That's what we're given, manage with that, the twelve hundred and some odd officers we have. So I know that West Region Headquarters has done a staffing review, and they look at moving people around to different detachments that maybe are in need or have too many for the calls for service they have, and they have done that. So that's, again, proactive and forward-thinking for those communities that need them. I know Brant isn't in that group. Right now, we're stable where we are. If the interest came and the calls for service were to rise, and let's say we started noticing a lot more issues in a certain area, we'll call it speeding or property crime and that, council could certainly visit that and decide if they were interested to enhance the contract. Welcome.
Constable Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, if I could, can you just clarify something for me? And you talked about, you know, if there's a shift that's short or something like that, we can call in from other regions. Now, is that, the officers, it'll be called in? Those are officers that are not scheduled to work through that time period? Or are they?
No, other agents, other detachments nearby.
Right. But is that, is that, so that's officers that are already on duty during that timeframe? They'll just come here?
Correct. We do it all the time, not just in Brant, but across the province. It's, we have several strategies in the OPP. I mean, again, we have a finite amount of money to deal with, and we're having, you know, as much trouble as anybody else in attracting officers. We have a lot of retirements, and we're trying to fill up these classes. And so we find that our detachments are struggling in some cases, because we just can't replace the bodies fast enough. We have strategies called, one's called borderless policing, which is what we just talked about. So if I had a shift sergeant working and he was down to a number that he wasn't comfortable with, he could. with, he could call up Norfolk and talk to them and say, I need a body or two for tonight. They would come work up here. It's sort of a small scale of what happens on a broader scale with things like PD-13, when we send officers down for that day to help them. And we had the airshow. I had Highway Safety Division come in and help us with the airshow, and lots of types of things like that. If, you know, if we had a major event here, I can assure you, there would be a lot of people here. And I'll give you an example, the homicide that we had in February, March, earlier this year. I checked today, because I kind of anticipated you might ask this question, and there was over 100 people, 100 officers in the OPP that touched that in the last nine months. Brand County's not being billed for those people, but you've got the benefit of those people. And they cover every discipline in the OPP. So, we also have scheduling mechanisms, so we've started to have shifts report a little bit earlier, the night shifts report a bit earlier. Instead of working when there's very few calls for service between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning, well, we look at it analytically, and we say, well, let's back it up a little bit, and we'll have more people working the day shift. We'll work till 6:00, and then we might start people at 2:00 and cover off part of their shift and help with that transition, and when the calls for service are highest. So, it saves calling people in overtime when we really need them.
Right, and I appreciate that. So, if I could just take this just a little farther, if I could. So, let's use Norfolk for an example. So, Norfolk calls us up, says, you know what, we're short three officers tonight. Can you help us out? We say, yep, sure, no problem, we can send a couple.
If we have the ability to.
Right. So, you just led into my question. At what point do we say, you know what, we'd really like to, it's a two-way street, I get that, but what point do we say, we've got to make sure that we have enough for our own community first?
You know what, it's, in a colloquial term, it's a game-day decision. So, if you have the summer time...
Counselor Cardy, are you listening to the answer, question and answer, please, that's part of council? Because that's your role here.
If we have a, if it's sort of a game-day decision, if we have a major event happening here, or a lot of, let's say we'll call it August on a holiday weekend or something, and, you know, there's lots of traffic on the 403, and the sergeant has to be comfortable that he can manage his shift that day. And anybody here that's ever been involved in business and had managers, you know, you want them to be able to manage and control what they need to control to make you efficient that day. And so, the expectation that we have is that the, if they need to, to call officers in overtime, they can try that. But to go outside first and bring other officers in, which won't impact the overtime cost for the OPP. You're asking about some strategies, and I can, we've also got something called civilian data entry. It was begun, I want to say, four or five years ago, but it's really been expanded now in the OPP to all detachments. And so, officers who are calling, doing the data entry, aren't sitting in front of computers all the time. They can phone it in, and technology is coming now where they'll be able to use the voice to text and just talk right in the car, and their reports will be typed. So, that saves officers sitting in the office when you want them and I want them in our community looking and being visible, as we say, showing the doors, right? So, there's a few strategies like that. We're at 92% compliance right now with our officers for civilian data entry. So, 92% of the calls that they could have typed before, they're now talking into a phone and getting it done much quicker. So, there's, you know, it's tough to, tough to say that there's a magic answer for every situation. We try to keep our officers on the road as much as possible, but in cases where we need to have help, as you know, and I'm sure you've experienced, if we need help here, it's a phone call away, and I could have 100 officers here within an hour. And that's just what you get when you get provincial, right?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your answer. Counselor Simon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the presenter. Do you do much paid duty? Do you have many paid duty hours?
We have a lot of paid duties.
Do you?
Yeah, the trouble is filling the paid duties with officers. And we typically go outside of Brand to find officers for them.
To find officers, yeah.
Right. It's a, it's a not required duty at all. We don't have to accept paid duties if we don't want to. And when so many of those turbine escorts were being done, we had to turn some down. We just, you can't, you know, staff them. You don't want your people working two or three back-to-back paid duties and then being too tired to come to work, so.
That completes all that list of questions. Thank you for your...
Thank you very much, everyone.
...attendance and presentation and the detail of the information. Thank you. That completes the list under presentations from external agencies. Oh, one question about the police contract to the treasurer. Is this forecast for 2018 based on the new population and number of buildings? It's unlike the conservation authorities that we have to follow through. Thank you for that information. Good. Thank you. With that, the next item says reconvene as council.
Move.
Moved by Counselor Coleman, second by Counselor Pierce, that we reconstitute as council. All in favor? Hoes carried. And the next item is listed as next meeting, but, and no member of council asks for another item to be inserted on the agenda. So, that rather looks like it completes the agenda. Am I, pardon? Do you have a question?
He wasn't, he stopped to tell me what he was feeling.
Oh, oh, I see. Yes, so he could go out that way. It's easily to get, easy to get out that side door now, because you just push it, and it's self-locking. Self-locking, it's completely better. Thank you for your attendance. We've covered a lot of ground. There were a lot of questions, and also a lot of answers. So, with that, a motion to adjourn the council. Did we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there was. All in favor of adjournment?